I call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. We will begin our meetings with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will note that all council members are present. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public can also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16, or 859. The public also can participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements and presentations. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, May 7th at 5:30 p.m. We have work sessions scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, May 14th at 5:30 p.m. We have a closed session for the city manager's performance review, and that is Tuesday, April 16th at 6:30 p.m. in the Nicollet Room. We also have another special work session, and that is our quarterly roundtable with our leadership team, and that is Tuesday, April 23rd at 5:30 p.m. And today, we are pleased and honored to recognize the service of the Code Review Task Force members. So tonight, we recognize their achievements and their service to the city of Burnsville through their work on our Code Review Task Force. The task force was convened in July of 2021 to undertake a review of our city code and make recommendations to the council. This is really, truly about getting our residents to participate in government and the rules that we make. And since that time, the members have diligently worked with staff on updates, which included making the codes easy to read and understand, and eliminating unnecessary barriers and regulations. They have now completed their monumental task to review titles 1 through 9, and we are grateful for their work. And I, along with I, along with the council members and our city manager, Greg Lindberg, and the members of our staff, thank the Code Review Task Force for all of their service. And one of the things that we'll do tonight is that we will give you certificates, but we have plaques for you that didn't arrive on time for this event. So please forgive us for that. But what I'm going to do, if you can all line up, I'm going to give everyone their certificates, and then we'll take one big picture with the council and our city manager in a frontier. So if you will join me over on that side, and if city manager, Erica?
She just got promoted to city manager.
Sorry, Grace. I'm gonna come too.
So Andrew, you chaired this committee, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle Ward, thank you so much. Vicki Anderson. Faisal Farah. Did I pronounce that correctly? Heidi Gillis. Donald Johnson.
Donna.
Donna.
Ironically, that is my husband's name.
Where is he? Donna helps us in so many ways, and I just was in a meeting with her also. Patty Stockwell. And Joshua Walz. And that's it, and thank you so much. And we'll be right over here, everybody, so that they can take pictures.
All right, ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Get some with my phone here. All right, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments, and this is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on our printed agenda and not an application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Anyone? Mrs. Henderson, is there anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items?
Nothing from staff.
Thank you. Members of the council? Okay, we will then move on. The next item is the consent agenda, and this is a grouping of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone who wants an item removed? Mrs. Henderson, anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City manager Lindberg, does the staff want to pull an item?
Not from staff.
Members of the council? May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Move.
There's a motion, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. The first item on the regular agenda is item four, and that is for a... No, item 5A on the regular agenda, and that is a public hearing. And this is a resolution adopting the Neighborhood Service Assessment. And presenting this evening is our community development director, Mr. Jeff Thompson. Mr. Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So as the council is aware, twice a year, as part of our council policy for neighborhood services, twice a year, we review outstanding fees and charges for neighborhood services and property maintenance. And then for those unpaid fees and costs, we consider, the council considers assessing those as special assessments to the properties with those unpaid. We've done a lot of work before we get to that point, so as part of our regular response to complaints or issues in the community around property maintenance or rental units, we work collaboratively with property owners and with tenants to make sure that we're trying to solve issues and resolve things before we ever get actually to ever any enforcement of a property. But there are certain, certainly those cases that do continue on despite our education and our collaboration, and so at some point, we do, if there's continued noncompliance with our ordinance, issue fines and citations for unresolved complaints. We give several notices about those fines, and then we provide the final notice to those that have outstanding fees and charges on March 15th. And then we also held an open house here at City Hall to address questions and work through any sort of concerns or issues with those outstanding fees and charges, and we didn't have anybody attend that open house. So with tonight, this is really the last opportunity to address concerns or questions on the fees and charges with the public hearing for the second half assessments of 2023. So the total, this period runs from July 1st to December 31st of 2023. The total amount of all unreimbursed charges in the assessment rule is just over $8100, and as I mentioned, that's the timeframe we're looking at. It doesn't include, if there's any sort of pending court cases or other litigation, it doesn't include any of those. We wait till full resolution of any of the litigation before we would proceed with this. So with that, we recommend the council hold the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the special assessments for the second half of 2023. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this item? Anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Henderson, anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. The next item is another public hearing, and this is to approve off-sale intoxicating liquor license for Cub Store Holdings LLC, doing business as Cub Wine and Spirits, at 1700 West County Road 42. Presenting this evening is deputy city clerk Erica Henderson. Mrs. Henderson?
Thank you. So this is for an off-sale liquor license for the new cub on 42, once it has been built. The license issuance is contingent on the applicant's successful completion of passing the background check, submittal of all required documents, the certificate of occupancy being issued, and all license fees being paid. City code does require a public hearing for all new liquor licenses, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Henderson. Any questions for Mrs. Henderson? Seeing now this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Henderson, anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you. The next item is 5C, and this is a public safety use of drones, acceptance of public comments this evening, and approval of the unmanned aerial vehicle policy, and authorization to purchase drones. Presenting this evening is our chief of police, Tanya Schwartz, and our assistant fire chief, Terry Ritchie. Chief Schwartz, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So just a little bit of background as a reminder, January 9th work session, the council supported the implementation of public safety use of drones and directed staff to move forward with developing a policy. And so we've been doing that. So we drafted a written policy, and so the process from here is to take public comment, ask city council for policy adoption, policy implementation, and management and monitoring of use, of course. And, oops, sorry. So with public comment, just in, with the statute requirements, the city has provided an opportunity for public comment electronically and by mail, and that's happened for tonight's meeting, and a policy governing the use of unmanned aerial vehicles was developed. It was also made available for the public for comment on our website, so we've done that as well. And so for tonight, really, just the process is, we're looking for city council to take public comment on the purchase and the use of the drones, the unmanned aerial vehicles, and then take public comment on the policy, and then approve the purchase of the UAVs as well. So that's what we're looking for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Chief Schwartz? Thank you. You all have done a very comprehensive work with all of this, in that you're looking to purchase four drones, and then the data storage and licensing
Yes.
of the drones, and then making sure that we certify 10 pilots so that we always have someone on the ready
Yep.
when things occur. And so thank you for that. And this is also, this is not a public hearing, but it's a time for us to take public comments on the use of drones. Anyone in the audience who wish to comment on this practice? This is equipment that our public safety, both police and fire, need in executing their mission and doing the work to keep us all safe. Chief Ritchie, did you want to make any comments?
I can.
Yeah, because you're going to be using these tools as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Obviously, drones are known in the public safety right now, it's really in the police world, but over the last year, year or two, it's really taken off, no pun intended, in the fire service also. For the use, it really can be used in, at firefight, at a fire scene, to help the incident commander really get a good look if we can't get in the backyard, or whatever that may be. Also, in water rescue programs, if there's any type of drowning or any type of water incident, the thermal imager in there can actually detect the body in the water. So our water rescue definitely helped with that, and then the biggest one probably is area search in our parks. So really coming down in the fire service, while we're not quite up to speed with like, with the PD right now, but in the near future, we will be looking to certify pilots also.
Yeah, well, you both work so well collaboratively, and that, I believe, makes us stand out from all other police and fire departments within our state and also throughout the country, and I thank you so much for the kind of collaboration and the care that both police and fire do each and every day to protect our city. And it's an honor to make sure that you have the equipment to do your work. So thank you so much. Is there anyone else who... So there are no comments? Any comments online, Mrs. Henderson?
We are trying to figure that out. Somebody did have their hand raised, but then they...
Took it down?
Yes. So I'm not sure. We're trying to get this, to see if they would still like to speak.
Can you chat with them and see if they're interested?
We have been.
You have been?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Can you see them?
Yes. And Jay has been in contact with them as well.
Okay.
So Jay's speaking with them now.
Well, we'll give them a minute, but...
Yes.
We'll just move on.
Yep.
Okay, members of the council, if there are no other questions for our chief and assistant fire chief, a motion is in order?
Move to approve as presented. Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your work also over the weekend. It's been a very busy, busy weekend and a busy day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everything that you guys do. Thanks. Okay, the next item is to adopt an amendment to policy number 1.027 for the city contributions to legacy events to include reimbursement funds. Presenting this evening is our strategic initiative director, Mrs. Bethany Brewer. Mrs. Brewer?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, I am here to present your policy revisions to legacy event policy number 1.027. So policy 1.027 is, governs our city commitments to our legacy events, community events, and special events. And back on, at a February 13th work session, council asked staff to revise the policy to include $50,000 for Burnsville Festival, and then $10,000 each for International Festival and Art and All That Jazz. In our conversation, council lastly asked us to bring back costs of 2023 basic city services and to review the use of EDA funds for those commitments. So just as a quick reminder, our legacy events policy does provide the following basic services for our legacy events, so provides a staff liaison, staff labor to support the event, and then waives any municipal permit fees when allowed by law. Our staff did do an estimate of our cost for basic city services for the past five years in each event, and in 2023, you can see the estimated costs for each of those events of the basic city services. We did review the use of EDA funds for this purpose. EDA funds can expand and diversify the local economy and enhance the city's position as a regional destination. And so as we were analyzing in our, our analysis would be that there is a nexus between those funds and the purpose for festivals or regional attraction that draw visitors, visitors spend money, which boosts our local economy and generates revenue for the community. So we did find a nexus there for those, the use of those funds. So for that purpose, the policy that you have with you, the redline policy, indicates that the EDA may reimburse legacy events for items reasonably associated with music production, artistic activities, and fireworks. So that's how it's written. And then the process for reimbursement uses a reimbursement process for transparency and efficiency. Legacy partners would submit receipts for eligible expenses. The policy as it is currently written and into the future does allow the city to request financial statements for the organizations that are putting on the festivals if needed. And then the reimbursement process would include in a resolution to approve the use of funds, and then items would be brought to the EDA for approval. So that covers the policy revision that we discussed and that you directed, and so we're here to stand before you for any questions.
Mrs. Brewer, when you talk about the reimbursement, that's not over and above the $50,000, is it?
No, Madam Mayor, that would be...
That includes, that's the $50,000?
Yes.
In cash?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make it clear that, yes, there's a $50,000 that is given, and then you identified the eligible items that the $50,000 can be used.
Yes, yes, Mayor and council, the
Yeah.
the music production, yep, artistic activities, and fireworks.
Okay, so I guess for me, the confusion is the reimbursement, when we're giving $50,000, and then there's three activities that reimbursable, but that's in the $50,000?
Yes, so, Madam Mayor and council, the $50,000 isn't given, right? It's the amount indicated, and then the reimbursement would, yeah, the...
I just want to make sure, because when you, your one slide says $10,000 to the International Festival, $10,000 to the Jazz, and $50,000 too, and then you said the reimbursable, but it's the $50,000 that is in, is where those three...
Reimburse for those activities up to $50,000, if that makes sense.
$50,000 for the Burnsville Festival?
For Burnsville Festival, terrible. Yeah, $10,000 for...
$10,000 for...
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Brewer? Council member Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's interesting, as I read through this, because of the funding coming from the EDA, in the spirit of how this was created and proposed, the $70,000 would come from the EDA. But the way it's written for reimbursable, one could interpret that all of the public safety and city staff billable hours that were put into that number could also become part of that, where we would have the EDA reimburse our general fund. That is not the intent, as I understand it, but to the city attorney, could it be interpreted that way?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't think as written, it could be interpreted that way. It started with the general concept that we had in our policy from before, and then we've just added that it's specifically from the EDA that these other funds will come.
The cash.
Right, these reimbursable expenses, but not the public safety, public works that's already provided by the city.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's, I knew that's the way we wanted, and then I was reading through and going, hmm, kind of feel like I could interpret it a different way, but thank you very much for the clarification.
Because it comes from the general fund, the cost of staff comes from the general fund
Right.
and the cash is coming from the EDA. Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Brewer? Okay. Members of the council and members of our community, I have great respect for my colleagues, and I know that this is something that they want. I disagree with it, and so I'm not going to be voting for this particular item, simply because I don't believe that it's right for any of us to sit on a nonprofit board that is, that we're members of that board. Why? Because we have access to the people's money, and that's not right, because it's like what's happening tonight, is that we have access to that money and to use that money for pet projects. So I am not going to be voting for this, and my colleagues know that. We have talked about it at work sessions, and I'm also going to be asking that, at a work session, members of the council, that we have a discussion about members of the city council sitting on the board of these festivals. Council member Keely?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had this public discussion at our work session, but I just want to thank the support of the majority of the council to, on this particular proposal that I brought forward. There's certainly a greater discussion about our participation of our volunteer hours on other organizations, the nonprofit organizations that are based in Burnsville. In this particular case, I would just probably push back a little on Pet Project. The Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster has been going on for 43 years, and I got involved two years ago to help keep it going, and because it's our largest and oldest festival, and it's sort of akin to Egan Days and Freedom Days in Apple Valley, and the Panaprog in Lakeville, and Leprechaun Days in Rosemont, that kind of thing. So it's really perceived as a very large citywide festival, and it is, it is a labor of love that I donate enormous amount of hours to make that festival continue to go. And this, the basis is, as I said in this work session, the basis for this proposal was actually learning from many other cities around us that do this, including Lakeville, which wasn't in our background, but they provide $50,000 in financial support to the organization that puts it on, and it basically is very isolated to fireworks, performances, musical performances, bathrooms, gating, that kind of stuff, whatever, whatever those costs are that are related to putting on a free and open music, fireworks types of thing. Everything else about the festival has to be covered by revenues, sponsorships, and other kinds of things. But, so anyway, just happy to have more discussion, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the support of the other council members who believe that this is the right thing to do, as many other cities have been doing for very, very long time, and we haven't. So I'm glad that we're actually stepping in, I believe, doing the right thing to support this festival and these other two festivals to ensure that they have a long-term future in our city. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve?
Second? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
Nay.
And the clerk has the division of the House?
I do, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And I see that that was the last of the items on the regular agenda, and there are no other items to come before us this evening. And a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn? There's a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.